I'd like to stay there, maybe even outside the city, I don't know. And then, and then go to the process.
Airbnbs are expensive.
I looked at the, what was the three, three nine seven? You knew that would be nine seven. Who called me if it was anything?
That's what I wanted to do. Yeah, yeah. Every day.
Because I'm still cutting down on my emails.
Oh, really? I, I have been.
He did a hundred and seventy.
But he tells me how many there is.
It has to be done. I'm throwing out so much duplicate stuff.
Throw me their water.
We're scanning and reorganizing.
It's so special.
All those facade programs too. Property will deal with facade. Right now it's just throwing away.
I'll leave, I'll leave.
You're locked in.
No, no big deal this week.
Ceremonial happens.
Yeah. That's your job.
I'd like to call to order the June twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. Madam Secretary, could we please get a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Dauntis, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Adam Barley, Maggie Harper here, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green, and Alderman Klee.
All right, we have a core. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the June sixth, twenty twenty four Planning Board hearing. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review those minutes and would like to make a motion with respect to approval as written or approval with amendment? Mr. Hirsch?
Move to approve the minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty four Planning Board meeting.
We have a motion by Mr. Hirsch. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstentions? One abstention? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Communications. Linda or Scott, anything to report on this evening?
Everything was uploaded the past few days. That's all we.
All right, very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Report of Chairman, Committee, and Liaison. Ms. Harper, anything this week?
I don't have anything this week, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good. All right, before we get into our cases this evening, I would like to read the Planning Board procedure. You just bear with me for a moment. The procedure of the meeting is as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision application is read by the chair, the Board will determine if that the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. The applicant shall speak to whether or not they agree with recommended staff stipulations. The Board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This would be the time to ask questions they may have regarding the plan. Next testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be allowed to a rebuttal period, at which time they shall speak to any issues or concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will resume the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. The Board asks that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand, and try not to repeat what has already been said. Above all, the Board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony provided. Based on the testimony presented, excuse me, and all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances for Conditional Use, Special Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivisions, thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and I would kindly request that you please turn off your cellphones or silence them at this time. First item on the agenda, we actually have four applications that would like to have heard simultaneously if we could. Under Old Business Subdivision Plans, we have case eight twenty-three dash zero six six, eight twenty-three dash zero zero six seven, and application eight twenty-three dash zero zero six eight. And coupled with those, we have Old Business Site Plan, case eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine. These are all applications dealing Blaylock Holdings or the former Mohawk Tannery Redevelopment Project. The Board first accepted jurisdiction over these four cases, I can't recall if it was last August or September, but basically we have been tabled for some time now, and basically we would just need a motion to remove cases zero six six through zero six nine from the table to the current meeting this evening. Any member prepare, any member of the Board prepared to make a motion reaccepting jurisdiction or untabling cases zero six six through zero zero six nine?
I'll make that motion to take those four cases off the table.
Thank you. There's a motion by, by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Mr. Zajak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, Pre-Congress Street here in Nashua. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Blaylock Holdings. With me here tonight is the familiar cast of characters Lloyd Geisinger and Bernie Plant from Blaylock Holdings, Michael Devon from Thorndike Development, as well as attorney Brad Westgate from Weiner &amp; Bennett. We're here tonight, finally, seeking final subdivision of site plan approval, as the Chair mentioned, for four separate applications related to the proposed Mohawk Tannery Redevelopment Project, which involves a remediation and subsequent redevelopment of the property into five hundred and forty-six multifamily residential units, as well as a host of associated site improvements. As, as you've seen and heard, this is a very large, complex project that has taken many years to come to fruition, and certainly relied upon the successful partnership between the project team, City of Nashua, EPA, DES, and many other public and private groups. Just a quick recap related to the local land use approval milestones. In April of twenty twenty-three, this Board provided a positive recommendation to the Board of Alderman related to approvals for rezoning of the site, a zoning overlay, the Veterans Memorial Parkway Overlay District, as well as a project's master concept plan. During April twenty twenty-three, we also filed these applications to this Board, that's the subject of tonight's meeting. In June, we then appeared before this Board for application acceptance and to introduce the project, and then later on in June, we did receive the Conservation Commission's favorable recommendation related to the wetlands and wetland buffer impacts associated with the, the project. As we've previously, previously talked about, the Overlay District ordinance requires that the project's master development agreement be first approved by the Board of Alderman before we could proceed with any final planning or zoning Board approvals. We're pleased to report that after many, many months of collaboration between the team and city staff, the MDA was approved by the Board of Alderman last month, of course, with this Board's positive recommendation. As such, we can now proceed seeking final approval of these applications. We will also be seeking approval of a special exception application related to those wetland and wetland buffer impacts at the zoning Board hearing next Tuesday night. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to Michael Devon. He's going to be providing the first half of our presentation. This is a similar presentation that this and other Boards have seen, but we felt it was important to provide this for both the Board and the public as a refresher, and then I'll come back up and hit some of the high notes on some of the technical aspects of the various applications. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I approach just as an hour earlier?
Certainly, please.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, it's a great honor to be here to present to you our, our vision and plan for the Mohawk Tannery site. We come here today after many, many months of work and collaboration in a unique public-private partnership with the EPA, New Hampshire DES, New Hampshire DOT, of course, city staff with Director Cummings, Director Sullivan, Engineer Hudson, Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard, Amy DeRoche, Director Durfee. This wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for everyone pitching in. It takes a village to raise a small child, I think it takes two to raise a Mohawk Tannery into a great site. As a quick orientation, the site sits along the Nashua River, adjacent to Mine Falls Park, right across the river is Mine Falls Park. It sits along Veterans Memorial Parkway, and the Parkway leads east to downtown Nashua. In twenty nineteen, Bernie Plant, founding member of Blaylock and, and this whole deal, had the, the know-how and the grit and the passion being a Nashville resident. I would also argue he had a little dash of crazy to think that he could take on this site and make it into the vision that we see here. At that time, he put under contract the Mohawk parcel as well as the Fimble Door parcel as a result of the Broad Street Parkway being constructed into the Veterans Memorial Parkway. That enabled the land to sort of be unlocked for the cleanup and eventual redevelopment. He approached the EPA, and in a landmark decision, the EPA decided to partner with Bernie and also fund, partially fund the cleanup effort that we will present later. In twenty twenty-three, the city put an RFP out for the right-of-way parcel that sits along the Veterans Memorial Parkway. The right-of-way parcel was always contemplated to unlock the, the lands and the cleanup and the redevelopment of these lands, as it was the one part on the Parkway that had a curb cut from DOT. That I'll discuss later, but that right-of-way RFP process went through. We were, we were the selected bidder. It went through an appraisal process that was approved by DOT as well. This is the presentation overlined, outlined. We're going to talk about the environmental cleanup, the redevelopment plan, the key elements of the master development agreement, which is the operative document that, that controls our deal with the city, the project timeline, and then I'll turn it back over to Tom Zajak from Heiner Swanson to discuss the plans in detail. This picture circa the nineteen seventies shows the, the current conditions at the site as it relates to the contamination. Of course, the Fimble Door factory and the tannery are no longer in this type of form, but what is there are two lagoons sitting right along the Nashua River. These lagoons are filled with carcinogenic sludge, and it sits within the hundred-year floodplain, hence why the EPA is involved, because if those lagoons were to be affected by a hundred-year storm, which seems to happen quite frequently, we could have an environmental catastrophe in the City of Nashua. In addition, there's another landfill that is a lagoon of carcinogenic sludge that sits on the former Fimble Door Factory property, as well as scattered waste throughout the site, asbestos associated with the construction of the Parkway, and asbestos along this parcel After our proposed cleanup that will be reviewed and worked through with the EPA and DES, we plan to consolidate all of the bad material into a containment area, which will be capped with an impermeable cap and elevated outside the five-hundred-year storm event, thus making it a whole lot safer for Nashua. That would have enabled the rest of the land to be cleaned and redeveloped. The redevelopment plan, as, as you've seen before, contemplates this master concept plan, a series of, of buildings, apartment buildings and condos, public amenities, private amenities, which I'll go into more detail in later slides. Overall, five hundred and forty-six units with two hundred and thirty apartments and three hundred and sixteen condominiums. Here is a three-D model. It's worth noting that this three-D model is very accurate to what we intend to build. It's, it's based off of architecture plans and, and made with, with reality in mind. The apartment parcels, four built, four buildings. The condos, five buildings. There's green space that will eventually be needed to the city. There's a public space. This area here is the containment cell where the sludge will eventually live and be unlocked for passive recreation for the residents, a series of public amenities, which I'll discuss later. Again, the Veterans Memorial Parkway running east to downtown. Here's a look back at the community. You can see, as you go through these slides, the, the vision that we have. It's contemplated that we will build a public canoe kayak launch, which will have associated public parking. Along the river, we will construct a riverwalk for residents of the community as well as Nashua to enjoy. This view also shows the wall in the containment cell elevated outside of the five-hundred-year flood, and residents of the community passive, enjoying passive recreations such as soccer, frisbee, sitting and watching people go by in their canoes and kayak on the river. This is a view across to Mine Falls Park. Of course, part of our plan is to construct a pedestrian bridge. That bridge has been a part of the city's plan since the nineteen seventies. It's a great amenity for us, and we think for all of Nashua, particularly the Little Florida, Fairmont Heights neighborhoods. This is a view back from Mine Falls Park. Tom Zajak, when I first got involved, told me about how he used to play soccer as a kid in Mine Falls Park, and to think that he was playing across from a contaminated site that now will be cleaned up and turned into something as beautiful as this is, is pretty Just as the contamination has been a problem for all of Nashua, we think that the solution should also be for all of Nashua. As such, we've contemplated a series of access points for the public. Fairmont Heights and Little Florida will have pedestrian access depicted in these blue arrows, and there'll be emergency access for the fire department, ambulances, and EMT as well. There's public access via vehicles and pedestrians down to the public canoe kayak launch, the riverwalk, and of course, across the river, across the river along the pedestrian bridge. Thorndike Development, the President Lloyd Geisinger is here. He, he has those same characteristics and qualities I mentioned about Bernie. The two join together in a cleanup of a site in Canton and the redevelopment of it, and from that partnership, they, they formed what is today Blaylock Holdings to, to create this. Thorndike, for over forty years, has been constructing homes throughout Massachusetts, and at the core of what Thorndike does is smart growth. So rather than creating a series of monolithic buildings, we, we try to enliven the streetscape and allow for people to live there, to feel as though they're part of a community, allow people to walk along the roads, enjoy the nice landscape along the street, fencing, landscape up top, patios, flat, direct entry flats along the street, which are screening a garage that's in the rear. Individuals in the community will be able to enjoy their patios, as well as a series of balconies above, so that people that live here get to feel as though they're a part of a neighborhood. As part of our plan, we, we are abiding by the city's affordable housing for the apartment complex. We are going to be building thirty-eight affordable homes for the community, as well as making payments in lieu on a, on a per-building basis, up to two million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, which will allow the city to create affordable housing elsewhere. Now diving into the details of the master development agreement, if this Board will recall, we were before you at the recommendation or referral of the Board of Alderman to, to seek your approval, which this Board did. There's members of the public here and online that may not have seen this, so we thought it was worth talking about, since this is the operative document between us and the city. This took months and months of negotiations with, with the city staff. Engineer Hudson was, was actively involved in that, so we can certainly speak to, to those discussions, and we think that we've made a great deal for us and the city in a win-win. Of course, the redevelopment plan cannot occur unless we clean up the site. That's first and foremost. That's what most people are most interested in, especially the neighbors, because it has been a public health crisis or public health issue for, for quite a long time. The EPA filed suit in May of nineteen eighty-four, so it's long overdue. Again, the right-of-way, we'll purchase that before we commence the remediation. The price of nine hundred and ninety thousand was determined by an appraisal, which was reviewed and approved by the DOT's appraisal unit. The purchase funds will unfortunately not stay with the City of Nashua, but will go to the Federal Highway Administration, and we, of course, are responsible for cleaning up the asbestos that is on that parcel as a result of the construction of the Veterans Memorial Parkway, and the city is selling as-is, so they have no responsibility for that contamination. It's entirely our responsibility, including the creation of the, the drainage system that works for the city's use on that Parkway. The housing program, as I discussed, three hundred and sixteen condos, two hundred and thirty apartments, thirty-eight of which are affordable, as well as various clubhouses for the, for each section, and of course, all the public amenities that I previously discussed. And the master concept plan was approved by the Board of Alderman, and we, of course, are here before you for final approval of the site plan that Tom will go into in more detail. As part of the deal, we also had to ensure that there was access to the Tamposy property that sits directly east to the, our, our site. The public and canoe, the public kayak and canoe launch and the associated parking, the riverwalk, pedestrian access to Fairmont and Intervale, the conveyance of the thirteen-acre open space, and the pedestrian bridge are all the public amenities that are, that are included. Again, the thirty-eight affordable rental units associated with the apartments and the payment in lieu of two hundred, two million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's worth noting that there is mechanisms, again, part of those lengthy negotiations. City staff thought through every nook and cranny in, in terms of how this deal would unfold. If Blaylock sells, there, there's an increase in those payments to, to the next subsequent One of the, one of the major sticking points during those negotiations was the construction hours. Those are contemplated in the master development agreement. City staff was really cognizant about what the neighbors were going to endure during cleanup, and we certainly will be abiding by those hours. Bernie Plant has kept in great contact with the neighbors. I don't know if there's a neighbor in that neighborhood that doesn't have a cellphone. All the roads and public amenities are to be maintained by, by us and the successors, except for the long-term maintenance repairs of the pedestrian bridge. It's worth noting that the community will be responsible for snow and ice removal on that bridge. The master development agreement also contemplates the various financing that the city is contributing to, to the development, including a two-million-dollar loan that's strictly for the remediation that hasn't, that money is not to be used for the redevelopment, but strictly remediation, as well as a revenue bond that's associated with the project's tax revenue. The bond will be issued by the NHRA, paid back through the NHRA to the New Hampshire Business Finance Authority from the taxes that are generated from the development. The MDA also lays out the various funding from the EPA, the State of New Hampshire. Governor Sununu was, was intimately involved with the project and allocated ARPA funds to it, again, the BFA's involvement and our own private funding as well. And then the pedestrian bridge, the plan is for us to develop it and construct it, and the city will, will pay it back via the general obligation bonds. The project phasing, over the next series of slides, we'll, we'll talk about how those public amenities are tied to what we're building. For instance, in Phase One, prior to the first CEO, we have to build the emergency and pedestrian access, as well as the beginning portion of the main spine road and the access to Tamposy. In Phase Two, prior to twenty-five percent occupancy, we have to construct the road down to the public canoe and kayak launch, seed the containment parcel, as well as convey the, the southern parcel. In Phase Three of the public improvement plan, we have to continue to build those pedestrian access points for the city, as well as the riverwalk and, and permit and build the pedestrian bridge. In the next phase, we're responsible for building the clubhouses that are associated with the various parcels. And finally, we, we finish the project with, with the last phase. In addition, the master development, development agreement lays out the waiver of back taxes. There's just over a million dollars in back taxes that the city really doesn't have a means to claw back from Chester Realty. They're practically a defunct, bankrupt entity, so there's no means for them to pay those taxes. We, we also have to put up performance bonds and, and of course, do our public improvements. Timeline, we are, we are moving and marching ahead at a great rate. Long hours are spent on this project across all sides, both public and private, and we're marching towards the fall closing. If the fall closing occurs, we then would begin remediation, which is a year-long process for the actual physical construction work, as well as a six-month EPA sign-off to make sure everything's done correctly, everything's settled, and, and they are able to prove that, that the work was done correctly. Once we have that sign-off, we can then turn to on the construction of, of the buildings, the apartments, and the condos. Going back to where we began, that's, that's the overview slide. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Tom from Heiner Swanson.
Thank you, Michael. So what I'm going to do real quick is just kind of go through the various points of all four applications. You've seen the overall vision for the property, and just want to circle back to each, each specific case, and I promise I will go quick. So again, our goal, my goal, was to take this overall vision of the property, the redevelopment under the guidelines established by the Overlay District, as well as what was established through the MDA in executing these subdivision and site plan applications. So there's three separate site subdivision applications, and this is really just basic land plans to set the table for the overall development. You saw on one of Michael's slides, the various pieces coming together, so I'll talk about those briefly. So the first case, which is eight twenty-three oh, oh, six six, is what we call the Parkway parcel. It's a two-sheet subdivision set, very straightforward, essentially subdividing about four-point-four-two acres of land out of the existing Parkway right-of-way, and as Michael mentioned, that right-of-way land will be purchased by Blaylock from the city, and currently contains a few asbestos disposal areas, as well as stormwater bases servicing the Parkway. I knew I'd go back on that. The second case before you, eight twenty-three oh, oh, six seven, is subdivision of the adjacent. Tamposy property. Again, this was a two-sheet, very straightforward subdivision set, existing map sixty-two, lot one hundred. It's about a five-and-a-half-acre piece owned by entities controlled by the Tamposy family. We subdivided off two-thirds of an acre parcel to be purchased by Blaylock, and really this additional acreage set the table for a base density calculation for the redevelopment. The third and final land plan or subdivision plan, eight twenty-three oh six-eight, is a consolidation subdivision plan. So again, this is really the plan set, the mechanism that sets the table for the lots, for the roads that will support the eventual redevelopment. So as part of this plan, we will consolidate all of the existing lots, so that's the Chester lots, the Fimbal lots, the Tamposy two-thirds acre lot, as well as the four-acre parkway parcel, consolidate and then re-subdivide into ten new lots along with a private street right-of-way. And as I go in my presentation, I'll kind of highlight maybe some of the things that changed from last June. So the private street is something that's different. I think we spoke about that at the meeting in discussions with the city. The developer was already going to be maintaining and operating all the infrastructure within that spine road or private street, but now it will be truly a private street instead of a public road. New lots two fifty-one through two fifty-seven will contain the redevelopment, including builds, roads, and parking. The thought process there was to have the apartments sit on their own, buildings sit on their own lots, as well as the condominium buildings. Lot two fifty-eight, which is, apologize? Going backwards, there it is. Four-acre parcel here that will house the eventual containment area. Parcel two fifty-nine, as Michael mentions, it's a thirteen-acre piece in the southerly part of the site, mostly wetlands and floodplain area. That lot will be conveyed to the city for conservation and passive recreation purposes. One change to this plan is another lot, it's lot two sixty. You might miss it here. It's up along Warsaw Ave. It's only a tenth of an acre. So this is new on these revised plans, and it's intended to be conveyed to the city for use as a public park. That was something that came up in our discussions with the neighborhood, the request for a pocket park in that location. So that is new to these plans, based on the plans you saw last June. Of course, the subdivision plan is really the mechanism where all the proposed easements associated with both the remediation and the redevelopment get put on record. So these include public easements for the public amenities that Michael mentioned, the public trailhead and parking on-site, the public pedestrian connectivity from Fairmont Street and Intervale Street, the public pedestrian access to the riverwalk, the kayak canoe launch, as well as the pedestrian bridge connection of Mine Falls. So all those easements are located within this plan set. The third and most important application is the site plan or redevelopment. As I mentioned, as we've talked about, redeveloping the site into five hundred and forty-six units, multifamily residential housing. The plan is very similar to the master concept plan approved by this board and the Board of Alderman last year. I won't go through my details in terms of the number of buildings. I think Michael has laid all of that out well. Very important that primary access for this project is a new signalized intersection on the parkway. All of our primary traffic will come to and from the parkway. I know that was very important for the neighborhood. And as Michael mentioned, this access point was contemplated during the original design of the parkway. So the private street that runs down the middle of the site, it's about thirteen-hundred linear feet, is, will be known as Monarch Street. And as I mentioned, all street infrastructure will be privately owned and maintained. You've seen Blaylock and Thorndike's goal of really creating that urban streetscape for the tenants, the residents, including street trees, grass trips, onsite parking, on-street parking, sidewalks, some of those ground-level and second-level terracing. It's really going to be an attractive project once completed. There is a second private street involved with the project where I'm pointing to here. It's a private street to be known as Carding Way, which will provide access and utilities to the Tamposy property to the east. Again, this is the only location where access is provided along the parkway, so given that property could and may come forward with a future development, we wanted to make sure as part of this project that access and utilities were provided to their front door, which it is. You will also see a secondary access point for emergencies off of Fairmont Street. That is gated and was specifically requested by the fire department. Fire marshal feels that that's the most direct route to the site from the Emperor Street Fire Station. Again, gated and to only be used for emergency access. The last access point I'll speak to is off of Intervale Street in the southerly part of the site. That's going to be a gravel twelve-foot-wide drive that will serve both as pedestrian access down to the public amenities, down to the public pedestrian bridge to Mine Falls, as well as providing the city access to some of the sewer infrastructure that exists along that corridor today. Parking, we're in a similar range to where we were before, nine hundred and thirteen spaces. That's a mix of surface parking spaces, garage parking, and also surface carport spaces. We're about one-point-seven spaces per unit across the site. Of course, you folks know that the min and max is one-point-five to one-point-nine, so we've got a good amount of parking provided throughout for this project. Grading and topography, certainly one of the more challenging pieces to the site. The main body of the site is fairly level with the parkway, but will sit down about thirty feet from Warsaw Ave and Fairmont Heights neighborhood. We're utilizing retaining walls and steep slopes throughout the project to help ease these grade transitions, trying to maintain the existing wooded buffers as much as possible along the east side of the property, as well as along the existing riverbank, along the river. And we'll certainly supplement with new fencing, berms, and plantings where necessary, specifically along Warsaw Ave. Utilities, of course, public sewer, public water. Sewer is onsite, as I mentioned, is an interceptor that runs right along the river, and so we'll be tying into that. Water will involve an off-site extension out the parkway up to Broad Street and then further west to the intersection of Blue Hill Ave, where we'll be tapping into a twenty-four-inch main and bringing a sixteen-inch, new sixteen-inch water main onto the site. In addition to that, the site will have its own private onsite booster station for fire and domestic that will boost water throughout our site. It contains typical drainage infrastructure, as well as other utilities, electric telecommunications to service the project. Just to give you an understanding, the site is about forty-one acres total. About twenty-two of that will be disturbed as part of the remediation effort, excuse me, and about twenty-eight acres total for the redevelopment. So the vast majority of this site will be disturbed as part of that remediation effort. Some of the criteria that was noted within the overlay district, sixty-five percent open space is provided for this project where a minimum of thirty-five percent is required. There is also something that is called green space, which is essentially contiguous open space that can be used for active or passive recreation. Thank you to Director Sullivan for coming up with that one. Fifty-five percent is provided green space where a minimum of fifty percent is required. You saw on the graphics all the various amenities and open space that's provided with the project. I mentioned some of the wetland and wetland buffer work. We'll be going before the zoning board next week to complete that process. We did go through an extensive review effort with the Conservation Commission last year. Really, all the proposed wetland impacts and buffer impacts are related to the remediation effort itself. It's also important to note that the site is located within the city of Nashua, urbanized shoreline exemption area, where therefore certain local and state buffers do not apply. Again, just want to hit home on some of these public benefits and pedestrian amenities, first and foremost, is the remediation and cleanup of this legacy contamination on-site, the donation of the thirteen-acre parcel to the city for conservation, the public pocket park along Warsaw Ave, public parking, the trailhead, the riverwalk, the canoe, the kayak launch, pedestrian connections to the adjacent neighborhoods via Intervale, Fairmont, and the parkway, as well as that pedestrian bridge connection, as Michael mentioned, referenced in the city recreation plan in the nineteen seventies. There's four quadrants of Nashua divided by the river and the highway. In this quadrant is the only section that does not have direct access to Mine Falls Park, which sits right in the middle, so you can't overstate the benefit of that as part of this project. Now the fun stuff, Mr. Chair, waivers. We have three subdivision applications, all waivers outlined in a letter dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Each include two similar waiver requests. Existing conditions, a hundred fee to the property, along with subdivision plan approval and procedure definitions. We've also got the site plan application, similar waiver letter dated same date, June fourteenth. There are four waiver requests there, one for plan sheet size, one for existing conditions on adjacent properties, one for site plan approval procedures and definitions, and another landscape waiver for the three-foot permeable area around the newly planted trees. Instead of going into these in detail, Mr. Chair, I respectfully request that these letters be incorporated into the record, including the specific elements of each of those waiver requests. In the interest of time, I was not going to go through those, but of course, would be happy to address any of those items in detail, with the exception of the approval procedures definition waivers. I know that's something that's slightly uncommon that this board has not seen. I know I have not been a part of a project that's requested that. Really, the genesis of that is that we want to make sure that the so-called five-year exemption criteria aligns the provisions of the land use code with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, related to that five-year exemption, as well as providing this project the necessary flexibility it needs. Again, we're seeking to get all entitlements in advance of a closing, but you saw on the schedule, the redevelopment effort itself won't take place for some time. Attorney Westgate is certainly available here tonight to address any detailed questions from the board on the matter, but I thought I might suggest that Sam could offer some perspective as well on that, should the board have any detailed questions on that matter.
Tom, thank you. I'll just interrupt momentarily. I think just because of the way some of these staff recommendations are written, I was going to ask Sam to chime in at some point during the process, but I think if you've concluded your presentation, I'd at least like to open it up to the public first before we get into the...
Yep, I got one more summary page.
Go for it, certainly.
So in summary, Mr. Chair, we're seeking your approval, final approval of these four applications tonight. You know, truthfully, this is really a transformative project for the city that will accomplish many goals. First, finally addressing this legacy contamination on-site that's existed for many, many decades, and they're going to do so in a safe and effective manner. Second is repurposing and revitalizing a currently vacant property that enjoys really direct access to the parkway and the highway. Third, providing much-needed housing stock in our city in the form of both market rate and affordable units. And the fourth goal is providing public amenities to open up and allow for improved access to nearly three thousand linear feet of frontage on the Nashua River, as well as that pedestrian connection to Mine Falls Park. Mr. Chair, we've reviewed the various staff reports and don't have any objection to the proposed conditions. I certainly would also like to take a moment to thank staff, specifically Sam and Dan, for all their efforts to get us to this point. We appreciate your time tonight and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question for the board. Lights on or lights off?
On.
I know they were on.
I can't read.
Very good. All right, does somebody mind switching those back on? Perfect, thank you. Any questions for members of the board?
I have a couple.
Scott, go ahead.
So a couple things. With respect to the parcel that's going to be donated to the city, can you go over a little bit about the work, if any, that would take place in terms of, like, what's it look like when you donate it?
Which parcel is that?
That's the southernmost, you know?
The southerly parcel?
The thirteen-acre thing that eventually gets donated to the city. Like, what's the state of that parcel when it's donated? I mean, is it corrodes on it? Is it just open land with, like, construction paths? Has it been restored to just, you know, new plantings? I'm just kind of trying to envision what it looks like when it gets...
So that southerly parcel, it's about thirteen-point-four acres. It's got a ton of wetlands and floodplain land there. It's mostly wooded right now. There are some evidence of some dirt bike trails and other things that have taken place over the years. But in terms of improvements, really the only improvements at the time would be the establishment of that Intervale pedestrian and gravel drive connection, as well as the easterly abutment for the pedestrian bridge. Aside from that, there are no plans to really disturb that area whatsoever. We've got a drainage swale outlet in here. We've got a small wetland replication area, but aside from that, there's no construction going on. There's no construction of trails being envisioned on that piece of property.
Okay. Yeah, I was just envisioning, I guess, like, if that was being used for any kind of construction, lay-down access, any of that kind of stuff in the interim, it would need to be restored, if you know what I mean.
Absolutely not.
So it's sort of being left as is. The pedestrian connectors between Intervale and, well, mostly between Intervale, well, I guess it's between Intervale and the river, as well as sort of that emergency access from Fairmont into the development, which I think that is also a pedestrian access, right?
Correct.
What's the improvement of those? Are they lit? You mentioned they're like gravel, twelve-foot, but like, give me a little better picture of what I'd see walking down it.
Yeah, so let's start with the Fairmont Street connection. Again, that's requested by the fire department. They're going to have gates, siren-activated gates. I understand those are being implemented at some of the schools and other areas in town. There'll be two of those gates. It'll be a paved twenty-foot-wide drive coming down. You know, there's, as I mentioned, there is a thirty-foot drop between Warsaw Ave and the site, which is why it's, you know, a long length there coming down. So it's paved. We don't have any lighting proposed up there. I know there's street lighting, you know, up in the Fairmont Heights neighborhood. There's street lighting on-site, but we don't currently have any lighting up and down that location.
Was there any discussion with the city about lighting?
We didn't talk in depth about it. However, I think for the purposes of allowing the neighborhoods to be relatively not, reduce the impact, having lights, you know, overnight was not something that was raised as an amenity that was requested, but also keeping in mind, you know, having lights on may actually be a detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to know whether it was thought about one way or another, why there would be or wouldn't be.
Mr. LeClair, if I could, I just was corrected on one thing I mentioned about the southerly parcel. There is some limited asbestos and remediation work kind of on the northerly side of that southerly parcel, so there will be a couple spots where it will be disturbed and then restored.
Okay. So those are basically like dig pits and then with the restoration is basically just...
Lomency.
Lomency.
Revegetate.
The last question I have really is just, it's based around sort of renewables and fossil fuels. You know, it kind of strikes me that this is a, maybe an opportunistic development to consider whether it be, you know, electrified versus fossil... to consider whether it be, you know, electrified versus fossil fuel, you know, in kind of in keeping with cleaning up the environment, how about also the air side of it. Is there any discussions been made or any considerations for not using fossil fuel for heating of the apartments and condos, you know, going to sort of heat pump technologies or something, and making that like a hard and fast rule? I mean, a lot of the municipalities around us and stuff are kind of going that way anyway. And then has there been any discussions about implementation of solar on any of the roofs?
No discussion of solar to date that I'm aware of, but I'm pleased to report that there is no natural gas that's being proposed on this project. All the buildings will be electric heat pumps. We do have access to a four-inch high-pressure gas main in close proximity to the site, but it will be all electric.
So is the, is the all-electric part, is that written into the plan?
It's shown on the plan.
It's shown on the plan, okay.
I don't, I don't know if there would necessarily be a restriction.
Yeah.
If we came back at a later date. One of the considerations we talked about, like, let's say the onsite booster station.
Yeah.
But the current plan shows all electric and electric heat pumps for these units.
I guess, so if the board were such to want to stipulate that, say, just for, let's call it the heating of the apartments and condos, I know as you get into like maybe pool heating and other things, it gets a little more complicated, but would the developer be amenable to that?
I can certainly ask a question. I think, you know, certainly it's nice to have that flexibility. They're headed in that direction for a reason.
Yep. That's fine. I mean, ask the question, I'll leave it up to the board to talk on it. And then as far as the solar component, I guess maybe the only thing I would ask for consideration maybe is that the roof design is such that it could be, it could be done at a later date. So, you know, there's certainly a way to design the roof system such that it is possible, you know, in terms of, you know, loadings and stuff like that. You know, that might be a good, happy medium kind of thing.
Understood.
Thing, so. But I'll leave it up to the board whether they think those are things that we're going to want to sort of write into the plan, if you know what I mean. All right, I'll give it up to other folks at this point, so.
Certainly. Thank you. Any other members of the board? Questions for the applicant? Ms. Harper, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't remember if we discussed this before, just because we've been talking about this for a while, but as far as the containment area, if that needed some type of maintenance to the structure in the future, how would that be taken care of? Would that be the responsibility of the property owner?
Yeah, I'm going to let Michael answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
I'm actually glad you asked that question, because I was responsible for a nationwide search on what would be done for that parcel, because part of our deal with the EPA requires that we identify a third-party owner for long-term O and M purposes. And so we found a company, Greenfield Environmental Trust. They're the premier entity that works with the EPA often on bankrupt sites and other areas to do exactly this, and they have told us that they're on board and they want to do this project. So that containment parcel would be conveyed to a trust that they would manage and be the trustees for. Blaylock would fund the first five years of O and M of the containment parcel, as well as put into place a 10-year environmental insurance policy, 10 years being the maximum amount that you can get from the insurance world for this type of policy. The city would be a named beneficiary of that insurance policy. And then after the five years of funding that Blaylock would put into place, the fees that are collected from the apartments and the condos would feed into the Master Development That association would work with the trust to ensure that the yearly allocations of their funding are met, their funding needs for the O and M are met, as well as setting up additional funds for reserve for more major improvements. So it will be funding from the community, first Blaylock, then the community, and they'll also have the means to tap into the environmental insurance. Given that it's a quasi-superfund site, in terms of like the EPA involvement, there's also the EPA, in an absolute worst-case scenario, they've said that they'll come back and assist if anything absolutely catastrophic were to occur, which we're not expecting at all.
Can I have one more question?
Please.
Is there a typical, like, end-of-life for this type of facility? Like, do they normally last 50 years? They normally last 20 years? Is there any data to that effect?
People much smarter than me have done those calculations. We have a team of environmental engineers, geotechnical engineers, working on that. The EPA, DES have also hired a third-party engineer from San Born Head. From my understanding, and Bernie or Lloyd can correct me, but from my understanding, it's built in that the O and M would cover that, the long-term O and M would cover what you're contemplating.
Okay, thank you.
One question sticking on the maintenance. How about cleaning graffiti off the walls?
That would just be a part of the association, just like in a regular community that has a board of trustees from condos and apartments. They'd be responsible for the cleaning, maintenance, the mowing, the snow removal, graffiti, things like that.
Okay.
The only, the only public amenity that would have to be maintained by the city is the pedestrian bridge, in terms of long-term capital improvement, but, you know, snow and ice removal would be also a part of the community expense. We're talking 546 units. You know, the fees coming from those is pretty significant to cover those types of expenses.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, all right. Thank you for your testimony. I think, oh, Mr. Hudson.
Well, there's lots of parts to these, talking about four different things here, but I just want to note that regarding the site plans, there are engineering comments that are referencing the stipulations, both from Joe Mandola, which is a letter dated June 14th, which ties in also a letter from Hoyt T. A. R. dated June 12th. And then there's some traffic comments as well. Mr. Zajak didn't speak to the conditions or that they're willing to meet the conditions, but there is a discussion of litigation in the VHB memo that I would like to hear confirmation on. We discussed, there's still some comments, there are no deal breakers, I think, left. They've done quite a bit of work to address most all the site comments that we had, some of them, the remaining ones are just cleanup. There's some off-site water layout that we need to talk more about. Public Works wants to talk more about the park parcel and what the configuration of that will be. And then there's off-site construction plans, which were recently updated. We haven't had a chance to fully go through those. The general layout of the intersection, front door intersection there is shown, so we have a general understanding of what that will be, but there's some dotting the i's and crossing the t's, don't need to be done to finish those. But this project starts with a remediation project, so we understand it'll take some time. So there's some time to work through these things post-approval here of the board, so we're comfortable moving ahead, even in light of these comments.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Dan. Tom, did you want to address that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Happy to go on record saying we're confident. We've reviewed the comments today. I met with Dan earlier this week. We're understanding where we're at in the process. It's a big, complicated project. We've talked about the unique timeframe. We're racing to get all approvals in hand for closing, but again, this is big remediation window before shovel ever goes in the ground on the off-site traffic or the off-site water. So we're confident we can address those comments in working with Dan and staff, as well as Sam and staff, in a manner satisfactory to them.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to open this up to the public at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to any of the four applications presently before the board? Seeing none. Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? All right, seeing none. Sam, would you like to take this opportunity to go over some of the language, if you don't mind?
I'd be happy to.
All right.
I will do this in the context of the site plan staff report, as that has, that captures pretty much everything, some of which is replicable to the subdivision applications. So beginning with the recommended actions section, we are recommending, you know, granting of the waivers requested. We are recommending granting final site plan approval. Final site plan approval, the key word being "final" is very important. Typically, the board grants conditional approvals with precedent conditions, as well as conditions subsequent. The conditions outlined in the motion for final approval are of a subsequent nature. I've worked with Attorney Westgate, reviewing the RSAs, and we're feeling very comfortable that all of these conditions meet the threshold for being considered subsequent under state law, and the reason being is so that, for one, for financing purposes and being able to expedite closings and really getting the financial machine behind this rolling, and that this be an approval that, upon final approval, the 30-day appeal clock starts. There's been some recent case law that kind of calls into question this whole conditional and final approval process, some of which really has not been fleshed out. Municipalities, the municipal association, we're still kind of figuring things out following some of these court orders. So out of an abundance of caution, we are proceeding with a final approval recommendation. A lot of these conditions that you see in here are pretty standard, some of which you see on almost every other plan that comes before this board, pretty much one through five or so. And this report, pulling from the city website, this was updated today, so this is current. But then as we go down the conditions, they get quite a bit more detailed to this project, really trying to capture a lot of the unique characteristics of this project, some of which is really just kind of a nod to some of the jurisdiction that other entities have, EPA, NHDES as well. If you have any questions on some of these specific conditions, happy to talk to them, but I would like to spend a little bit of time talking about this five-year exemption. So this is one of the waiver requests. In section 6.3, this is where we get into defining some of the terms around active development, active and substantial development. So we have some language in our ordinance that defines this, and we wanted to amend that slightly, given the complex nature of this project, given the remediation effort and the amount of public infrastructure improvements that are contemplated, and frankly, the very detailed thought that had gone into the phasing plans, it made sense to modify how we define active and substantial development. So those, that's all spelled out in this five-year exemption. The five-year exemption itself is really protecting the development from changes in zoning ordinances. As you know, we are contemplating a code update, so that's particularly pertinent in this case, but also it's just, it's a very common thing to do. We do have authority under the state law to make modifications to that timeline of exemption. We currently sit at four years, and as you can see, the request is to bump that up to five years or 60 months. I think those are some of the high points. You will note in section three, under this five-year exemption, there is a list of about 11 points. This is really where all of the public improvements are enumerated and captured. All of this also is reflected in a schedule of public improvements in the master development agreement that is directly tied to building permits, construction of buildings, issuance of COs. It's very detailed, and it is referenced in this report, in these reports, the plans all are directly tied to the master development agreement. Really cannot overstate the importance that document plays, as a governing document in this entire development. But I will, I will leave it there, and if you have any more specific questions, happy to dive into that.
So just a quick question on like, organization of the motion.
Yes.
Generally speaking, we would sort of make a motion for, let's just say it's an approval, and then we would put the approval of the waivers within that. Are you recommending we do a, we start the motion? It can all be one motion, right? But we can start the motion with a recommendation for XYZ with respect to waivers, and then move into whether or not we would approve or make a motion to approve or not approve a final site plan, and then add a determination section onto it at the end of the motion that pulls in the five-year exemption?
So I, I would recommend that we break out and do multiple motions.
So you could do them in three, essentially?
Pretty much, yes. So just as the recommended actions are broken out into three different sections, take the waivers first, as you need to grant the waivers before you grant the site plan, because the site plan needs to comply with all the regulations, and you are waiving some of those. So waivers first, then the site plan approval, and then as part of, or subsequent to that motion, you are then granting modifications to the exemption, the protection from ordinance changes, and then in that you're wrapping in all of these other things that are tied to that, that, you know, list of 11 different public improvements, so on and so forth.
So three motions.
Three motions, yes.
For practical purposes.
Yeah, and as when we get to that point, I'm happy to...
Yeah, no, I get it. I was just trying to be, just trying to understand the structure.
All right. Thank you, Sam. We may need a refresher when it comes to that, but it sounds like for each one, there's a, I think they're numbered slightly differently, but there's a point, a point one, a point two, and a point three, which all need to be part of the record for the decision.
Correct. I will point out one other unique motion, and this is in case A230068. This is the controlling subdivision. This is where the post-subdivision of right-of-way and the tamposy lot, this is the lot merger, and then re-subdivision, as Tom stated, setting the table for the development. When the Board of Alderman approved and adopted the overlay district for this area, very similar to the TOD where the MU overlays in the city, it grants to the board the authority to modify dimensional standards, which is very important in this particular sense, because the creation of some of these lots would be quote-unquote "substandard." There's various aspects of the dimensional table that they wouldn't be able to meet, simply due to the nature of being a public street, or an example would be the public park, Lot 260 on Warsaw's, undersized for the district. So this motion, which would be 5.2 on case 68, basically lays out a statement of recognition, and then, you know, we're using our authority as a board vested by, you know, reference the Veterans Memorial Parkway overlay district, we can modify. And there's a note on the plan that, you know, speaks to that effect too. So it's a formal recognition of certain aspects being substandard, but we are modifying. It's not... It's, it's not a waiver, it's a modification, so it's just slightly different.
All right. Thank you. I think at this point, Sam, we appreciate your, your feedback on that. I'd like to close the public hearing, go into deliberation. I guess just, just for starters, I, I have a positive view of this application. I, I think there's probably been more eyes on this project than perhaps any other in the city in a long time. Understanding some of the new intricacies with sort of our procedural vote and motions on this, I, I would also imagine there was considerable time and care taken into exactly what needs to be included to, to get this done. So, that's my general thoughts on this matter. I think there's an opportunity here to, to fix some things from the past. But I, obviously, I, I welcome the rest of the board's feedback on this. Scott?
Yeah. I'm, I'm in the same camp as you. I mean, I think we've been looking at this for a couple of years now and have a pretty good understanding of, of where it's going and, and there's been a general high level of enthusiasm and, and I believe personally approval for it. I'm, I'm interested in what the board thinks of hard coding the fossil fuel free requirement of the, of the condo and apartment buildings. I think it's an opportunity, it sounds like the developer's doing it anyway, so we're not adding a requirement, but I am always concerned about development, sales, and things like that and some of that stuff losing traction and, you know, having been or currently being involved in many, many projects around many municipalities in New England. It's a matter of time before we're going there anyway and it wouldn't be a bad project to set an example as far as I'm concerned. So, I'd be kind of in favor of adding that language. It would be probably specific to the site plan. I don't think it has to be tied to any kind of subdivision, you know, 'cause who knows, you know, right? But on a site plan, it seems like it might be appropriate to me as well as, you know, making sure that their roofs or whatever are designed for potential renewable. They don't have to do it, but if you don't design it that way in the first place, it's kinda never gonna happen. Thoughts?
Just a question. So, if that were a requirement, at least for the build-out, would that prohibit them from switching to fossil fuel in the future if they, if they had to? Because, you know, there have been times where, you know, I don't know how many years ago, heat pumps were the thing and then electricity became very expensive and, you know, that could become a hardship for someone in the future, I guess.
Yeah. I think there's always, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's always a way to come back and ask for an amendment to that kinda stuff, but they'd have to come back to us to ask for it.
That, that is true. I, I do have some reservations about the legal authority of the board to impose such a condition. I've, this is, this is something that likely should have been contemplated and enshrined in the master development agreement. However, I, I would let the applicant speak to, you know, the, the market finances behind this. It's my understanding that they fully intend to do this, go, go full electric. But to be, to be locked in with a condition, I do worry that exposes the board's decision to a challenge. And, you know, personally, I feel comfortable taking them at their word. You know, what they're doing for the site is, is a tremendous benefit to the community. And, you know, I think that, as you well know, the, the economics of electricity are becoming ever more competitive to fossil fuel alternatives, but also recognizing having, having access to gas nearby, you know, there, there may be unforeseen reasons why that needs to be tapped and utilized on-site and to, to cut the applicant out of using that for what, for any unforeseen thing, I, I think would, would not be a good idea. Personal opinion, but I do also professionally worry about the legality of such a condition.
Okay. Sorry, we're not open to the, to the public. Yeah, I mean, that's a good point and that's why I wanted to have the discussion to kinda like, you know, see what the, you know, and it might be something that we're just not up to speed on as far as the city is concerned, you know, and I think the more we bring it up in these meetings, the more other policymaking people that aren't, you know, we're not policymakers will get hopefully the hint that they need to start working on that, but.
Well, and if I may, you know, it is something that we're actively considering in the land use code update is, is using some of the leverage of, that we're seeing in the marketplace and also, you know, we have these goals outlined in the master plan, but also recently adopted the sustainability plan in providing, you know, benefits, bonuses, you know, other incentives for, for building, for, you know, electric ready, full electric buildings, solar ready structures, things like that, you know, incentivizing it. The enabling legislation from the state is, is much more of a, of an incentivizing, incentivizing nature rather than something that we can mandate. So, again, in that same vein, I do have concerns where we're not necessarily giving the development something for mandating this all-electric even though they've already said they would do it. I, I do have concerns about that.
Yeah.
What a point well taken.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it's a showstopper for me, but I feel like it was necessary to get it out and start talking about it as a community and a, a board. Anybody else?
My concern is, you know, the technology's changing, the district, we have problem with electric distribution systems and all that. It may not be economically feasible to go all-electric at some point in time. I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, I'm just speculating down the road. So, I don't think we should be in a position to mandate something like that.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah. I echo Sam's concerns. I, I and others have been working with the applicant for quite a long time. I do wish it was something we would've thought of and considered early on in the discussions, but at this point in the process, I, even though this is only the second or third time the boards heard this, I think it's maybe too late to add in. I, I believe the applicant's, in all the, the process we've gone through, is showing good faith in, in trying to come to agreements and fulfilling obligations and whatnot as, as the city. So, I don't wanna throw this in at the last second, I guess, is my opinion. But I do appreciate you bringing it up for, so that we'll think of it with the next one and the land use regulations, 'cause, 'cause I do, I do concur with your thought process there. Anybody else wanna speak to that? I did have a question for Sam on another matter.
No, go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
All right. Sam, I just, the, the five-year thing was kinda new to us. I just wanna confirm that that's just peculiarity of our ordinance relative to the state RSA. It is the normal process of the state RSA that people would be granted that five-year exemption, whereas our regulation reduces that timeframe to four years. So, is that true?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know whether that's, I don't know if that was purposeful in our ordinances or if that's just a factor of the age of our ordinances and maybe that's something we'll be updating in the future, I don't know, but.
I think it's a combination between that and just the unique nature of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comment or questions from the board? All right. We, we obviously have Sam at our disposal, but if, if the board was potentially considering making a motion, we would need four separate motions for each case and it seems like there's some additional language that we will have to consider with, with each one. But I, I guess we'll, we'll start off with the subdivision plans. Is any member of the board willing to make a recommendation regarding old business subdivision plan, case A23-066? Scott, please.
Yeah. I'll take a shot at it and see if we can get the first one through and then, I think, I think I can simplify this a little bit too. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with, I'd like to make a motion to first with respect to case A23-066, that we grant waivers for section 190-282.B.9 and, and section 190-145 as indicated in the staff report and that those waivers be essentially granted and find that they're, to meet the intent of the, of the ordinance. Does that work for approving those waivers?
I would appreciate a little extra language around the findings, specifically utilizing the various RSAs that are cited, the waiver criteria, 190, 148D, strict conformity and specific circumstances.
Uh, trying to.
It's the last paragraph before 5.2.
Four.
B4, 5.2. Yeah.
Four, five. Yeah, I'm only gonna have to report that you have.
Just before we go down one.
Yeah.
Actually, next page. Go into this last paragraph of those of the RSA, say, the, the section 190.
Okay. All right. All right. So, I'll add to those recommendations for granting the waivers, that these are being considered utilizing the criteria from RSA 674-362N, RSA 674-443E, and section 190-148D. Did I cover it?
That works. Thank you.
All right. I'll stop there for that first motion for granting of waivers.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leclair. There's a motion on the table by Mr. Leclair for the granting of the waivers. Staff report has written, section 5.1. Is there a second? Oh, second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Scott, would you like to continue on?
Yeah. So, I'd like to make a second motion and this motion being for final approval, be granted to Blaylock Holdings LLC with respect to its application for subdivision approval in case A23-066, finding that that subdivision does meet the requirements in our approval criteria under section 190-138G with the one, two, three, and the four subsequent conditions as indicated in the staff report.
All right. Thank you.
Did I cover it, Sam?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. There is a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Scott, feel free to continue.
Okay. And I'd like to make a third motion on this particular case, A23-066, that the, for the five-year exemption, that pursuant to the proposed motion, we recommend, we make the following determination, having taken into consideration section, section 190-145 of the land use code and RSA 674-39 and that that five-year exemption be as written in the staff report. I'll leave it at that.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Case 0023-0066 is approved. Next. Scott, great, great job with getting through that on the first try. You're, you're certainly not obligated to, to take any others since you, you laid the foundation so well, but is any member of the board willing to make a motion regarding case A23-0067, the second of three subdivision applications before us?
I'll keep going on. All right. So, with respect to A23-0067, I'd first like to make a motion to grant the following waivers, section 190-282B9 as well as section 190-145, with the language as written in the staff report and taking into consideration the criteria from RSA 674-362N, RSA 674-443E, and section 190-148D.
I would also say if you ask if you find that these, the granting of the waivers, you know, compliance with the waivers would be, or strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and granting the waivers due to specific circumstances or conditions of the land and would properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations, just that, that finding is important.
Okay. Yeah. And then I'll add to my motion that strict conformity would these, would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver would be not, would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. In specific circumstances or condition of land indicate that the waiver would be properly carried out in the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Mr. Leclair, please.
Yeah. I'll keep going with a second motion on A23-0067. That motion be the final approval be granted to Blaylock Holding LLC with respect to its application for subdivision approval in case A23-0067, finding the subdivision does meet the approval criteria under section 190-138G. And this motion include the following subsequent conditions, those one, two, three, and four as written in the staff report.
All right. Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair on the table. Do we have a second? Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Scott, please, continue if you wish.
Yeah. Continuing on, third motion for case number A23-0067, this being the five-year exemption, that the, we grant final approval, having taken into consideration section 190-145 of the land use code and RSA 674-39, using the language that is in the staff report for this exemption.
All right. Thank you, Scott. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Collectively, case A23-067, 0067 is approved. Next item, any member of the board like to make a motion regarding the third subdivision case, A23-0068? You're on a roll.
I'll, I'll keep cranking here. All right. So, motion number, motion number one for case A23-0068, be that we grant the following waivers, one for section 190-282B9 and one for section 190-145 as written in the staff report and that we make these waivers, taking into consideration criteria from RSA 674- criteria from RSA six seventy-four thirty-six two N, RSA six seventy-four forty-four three E, and section one ninety dash one forty-eight D, understanding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship on the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and specific circumstances or conditions of land indicate the waiver will be will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Alright, thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Scott, please.
Alright, so second second motion for case eight twenty-three dash zero zero six eight, that motion be for final approval of be granted to Blaylock Holdings LLC with respect to the application for subdivision in this case, finding the subdivision meets the approval criteria under section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, and that approval be with the subsequent conditions as written in the staff report, one through five.
Alright, there is a motion from Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? I'd actually like to bring up one discussion point. Sam, we have five point three in front of us now as a motion?
Yep.
Do we need to go back and do five point two? Do they have to be done in order, or can we vote on five-three?
You have a motion on the table.
That's what I mean. Do we need to?
Yes, please table that motion and then go do five-two, and then you revisit that motion on five-three.
Okay. Alright.
Well, someone else can make a motion to table my my current motion.
Who wants to table that motion?
No. Alright, is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. All those in favor of tabling the motion with respect to section five point three?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, five point three is tabled. Scott, please continue if you'd like to make another motion.
Yeah, I'll make another motion to grant for case number eight twenty-three dash zero zero six eight, and that's to grant an approval for dimensional modifications as authorized in section one ninety dash twenty-six point two F two of the National Land Use Code, determining that the resulting lot dimension proposed by the subdivision did not materially conflict with the master concept plan or the master development agreement.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Would any member of the board like to make a motion with respect to untabling, motion related to section five point three of the approval?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Scott, do we need to officially vote on that now? I can't remember if you completed the thought on that.
I completed the motion, so I think we I don't know if anybody seconded it yet.
Let's have a second then.
Certainly. Is anyone willing to make a motion with respect to approval of section five point three?
Second.
Ms. Harper, thank you. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Scott.
Alright, I'll make I'll make one one more motion with respect to eight twenty-three dash zero zero six eight, and that motion be that we grant the five-year exemption, making the following determination with consideration of section one ninety dash one forty-five of the land use code and section RSA and RSA, section six seventy-four thirty-nine, with the one, two, three, the three, with the language as indicated in the staff report.
Alright, there's a motion by Mr. Leclair regarding the five-year exemption. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Case eight twenty-three dash zero zero six eight is approved. One more item with respect to site plan, case eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine, is any member of the board prepared to make a motion with respect to site plan? Mr. Leclair, please.
Yeah, I'll wrap this up with one more, another motion, this being with respect to site plan, eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine, in that we grant the following waivers. First was section one ninety dash two seventy-two, another for section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE, a third for section one ninety dash one forty-nine, and a fourth for section one ninety dash one eighty-five D, with the waiver waiver language as written in the staff report, and understanding that the board is utilizing the criteria from RSA six seventy-four thirty-six two N, RSA six seventy-four forty-four three E, and section one ninety dash one forty-eight D, understanding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and the specific circumstances or conditions of the land indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Alright, thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair with respect to granting of the waivers. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Scott, please continue if you wish.
Another motion for case number eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine, the site plan, and that motion be for approval with respect to its application for site plan, finding that the site plan meets the approval criteria under section one ninety dash one forty-six D, and that this approval include the subsequent conditions numbered one through one through fourteen as written in the staff report.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor with respect to approving the final site plan approval. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. I think you just have one more.
Yeah, one more motion here with respect to eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine, and this is with respect to providing a five-year exemption, that we we grant final approval of that, and make the following determination, having taken into consideration section one ninety dash one forty-nine of the land use code and RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, and we make that exemption consistent with the language as indicated in the staff report.
Alright, thank you once again, Scott. There's a motion on the table regarding the five-year exemption of the site plan approval. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes, and case number eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine is approved.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Before we hear our next case, we're actually, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call a brief recess, about five, 10 minutes or so. We are adjourned as of eight thirty-nine PM.
Property possible, those are extensions, too? You guys, you guys ready?
Ready.
Alright, alright. Larry, if you wouldn't mind one more time, the old knock.
Yep.
Alright. Alright, we're back in session at eight forty-five PM. Next item on the agenda, just want to clarify, at the request of the applicant, under old business subdivision, there was an application for Stellows Family Investments, and also under old business site plan, same applicant. At the request of the applicant, those have been postponed to the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting, so if you're here for either Stellows application, that will not be heard tonight. Next item on the agenda, under new business, conditional use permits, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight eight, ARBI Farms LLC, property located at eleven Tara Boulevard. Is any member of the board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion regarding board accepting jurisdiction? Mr. Hirsch?
I'm going to take jurisdiction.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept jurisdiction over case eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Board accepts jurisdiction. If you're here behalf
on behalf of the applicant, just please introduce yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My name is John Weaver from McLean Middleton, here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight are two representatives for the applicant as well, Andrew Gentile and Giobanea. This is a pretty straightforward request for an extension of the conditional use permit that the board approved in two thousand twenty-two. Brief history of what led us to this point. The applicant company was purchased shortly after the original approval in two thousand twenty-two, due to the corporate reorganization and reevaluation of the plans. In two thousand twenty-three, we requested an extension of that conditional use permit that was granted by this board. Since then, the company, the client, excuse me, the applicant here has been assessing the property and determining the repair work necessary basically to bring a rather old building up to the current standards. They've largely have concluded that process. For example, roof replacement has already begun via two to four million dollar investment in the property. However, they want to make sure that the conditional use permit that allows the preferred use at the property remains in place, and so that that leads us to request the extension here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board on this application?
Just one for staff, like, what's the timing on the like, when's this one run out and then this one go to?
We just began on the replacement, so it could be two, two four million, like you just mentioned, and we're gonna see how long that takes. We also need to do some transformer, and I think see who that a couple of things that are kind of taking priority to get that whole building up to.
Sorry, I.
Yeah, no, I think what Scott's asking is.
Yeah, I need it from staff.
No.
You're welcome, you're welcome to come up and talk on it, but I need to get something from them.
It would be effective this date.
Okay, it would be effective.
Not the earlier date, so.
Got it. So we're going one year from today. That's that was really my only question.
No problem.
Ms. Harper?
I think my question is also for staff. I'm trying to recall if we had determined whether there would be a certain number of extensions that we would allow applicants to pursue. So this is the second extension.
Second one.
I can tell you that all the years that I've been here, I think three is.
I can tell you that all the years that I've been here, I think three is the most.
Three, okay.
There are no hard, fast rules, though, about the number of extensions.
And I would also point out that the, the National Ordinance doesn't specifically state when a conditional use permit vests other ordinances and other municipalities. And state law generally says when construction begins or when a building permit is pulled. Arguably, the roof work that has commenced would allow it to vest, but as I mentioned, we want to dot I's and cross T's here, so we're here extending that even though that work has already begun.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, another question for staff. Maybe I'm confused, but this references that there's no stipulations. Is there no stipulations under previous approvals that could get carried forward in this case?
In this, in this particular case.
I'm just, I'm recalling the traffic.
That's fine, yeah, generally, we do have reference back to the original stipulations. I'm wondering, it was a C U P conditional use, so they would, yeah, let's change that and refer back to the previous one.
And that certainly our understanding that the conditions from the previous.
I just recall that some traffic mitigation requirements and whatnot, so I want to make sure those get carried forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none. Open it up to the public. Any member of the public here this evening to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? All right, seeing none. Is any member of the public here to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none. Give the board one last chance for the applicant. All right, I will close the public hearing on this one, enter our deliberation. I think this is fairly straightforward. Dan, thank you for having the memory to recall some of the past conditions. And I guess the only thing I would add, if any member of the board is willing to make a motion for approval, just to add in, I guess it would be one stipulation that all prior conditions of approval are applicable with the extension. But that's, that's all I have to say about that. I would obviously welcome other thoughts or questions from the board. All right, in that case, is any member of the board willing to make a recommendation or make a motion with respect to the extension for case eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight eight?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Harper, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve case eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight eight with one stipulation that the original conditions or stipulations of approval are still in full effect.
All right, there is a motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion passes. Case eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight eight is approved with their extension. All right, next item on the agenda, New Business Subdivision Plan, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero seven one, property located at six Berkshire Street. Is any member of the board had an application, had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion for board jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Harper?
I'd like to make a motion to take jurisdiction.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Harper to take jurisdiction over case eight twenty-four dash zero zero seven one. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion passes. Board has jurisdiction over the next case. Is any member of the applicant's team here to speak? Certainly, just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services, and I'm here on behalf of DuCal Development and Ross Brown in this application. I see that the image is on that screen, but will it be on the front screen as well?
No, that's just for overhead, Dan.
Okay. Just to start, this is a fairly straightforward two-lot subdivision. The first series of related plans and applications you had were fairly complex, and I can tell you that this is quite the opposite. The property in question is known as number six Berkshire Street, also known as lot sixty-one B dash nine. It's approximately one hundred and fifty feet of frontage and just over one hundred feet in depth and effectively nearly rectangle. That results in, I hear, over fifteen thousand square feet. There's an existing house in the property that is understood to be built in the sixties. There's also a shed in the back corner that is in some level of disrepair. It's our intention to subdivide this lot into two residential lots. To do so, we required three variances that were granted in April. The variances were for frontage, lot width, and lot area. And as I said, those are all granted. So, as you can see in our subdivision plan, the intent is to create a fifty by one hundred effective lot for a new residence. Residence will be a three-bedroom house, approximately eighteen hundred square feet. To meet all of the requirements, we actually have a three-sheet plan set. The first sheet that you see now is the recordable sheet that'll identify the subdivision, but as you're well aware, the stormwater grading and utilities are also required to be shown. In this particular case, there is a very specific house that's being proposed and is intended to be built as soon as possible with the good fortune of receiving approval. The second sheet shows all of the various stormwater components. We are proposing infiltration trench, a small yard catch basin, if you will, with a pipe and stone trench to infiltrate the stormwater from the site. The site's nearly level. It has a slight slope from the back of the lot to the street, and it's effectively wide open except for the shed that will be raised. We've taken a look at the staff comments, and notable, obviously, we are asking for three waivers. First waiver has to do with the requirement for detail up to one thousand feet away from the subject lot. Second detail is for sidewalks. There are no sidewalks on Berkshire Street, and it's our intention to contribute to the sidewalk fund as directed. I think that total sum, once you add up all of the frontage and subtract out eighteen feet per driveway, the resulting dollar amount at fifty dollars per lineal foot would be five thousand seven hundred dollars. Thirdly, we're requesting a waiver for underground utilities. While that would certainly make sense for a larger development, perhaps with new roads, the utility pole that serves the existing house at number six is directly across the street, and this is not a very long distance to go with a new overhead connection. However, the request is actually couched that we'd like the option. Generally, my clients, DuCal, prefer to have underground utilities, but it's also dependent on Eversource and the set for the utility pole. There would have to be a new utility pole installed at the corner of the slot to go underground, so we can't get away from the fact that the overhead would come across the street, Berkshire Street. And then, if there was underground, then it would go the remaining thirty or some odd feet underground to the house. We're asking for an option. If the cost and the effort is not substantial to have the overhead to a drop pole and then go underground, we'd be happy to do that if it makes sense economically. We're merely asking for the option for this particular case, given the circumstances of this lot. After looking through staff comments, obviously, there are a series of particular precedent conditions. We have no issues with any of those. However, I will draw attention to number seven. Number seven are the comments from Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer. His comment number six, which I'll read, notes existing sewer service to lot nine should be shown, and by that, he means the existing house for lot number six. The record sketch is available. Well, we attained that sketch, and as I noted, the house was circa nineteen sixty in that vicinity. The sketch we received was from nineteen thirty-seven. At that time, this was a farm, and the sewer sketch was noted to be for the, and let me see if I get this right, the milkhouse, which no longer exists. So, we're more than happy to comply with the conditions of approval as noted by staff and just, which also state that the engineer comments would be completed to his satisfaction. So, I'm sure we'll reach common ground on that one. In fact, the plan you see before you already has every other of Mr. Mandola's comments incorporated into it. We had an opportunity to get that plan updated and have that before you tonight. As I said, this is an extremely simple and straightforward infill subdivision for a house, and quite unlike the first grouping of applications, I really have a brief presentation and that's it. So, I'd be happy to turn it over to the board for questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Hudson, please.
Not so much a question, but I just wanted to speak to that comment number six regarding the existing sewer service. I'm sure we can reach agreement. It's often the case that information we have on file is outdated, maybe a permit wasn't updated, that sort of thing. Probably in completion of this and the result of the subdivision, we'll end up issuing revised sewer permits. Six, for the existing house, we'll probably need just the applicant to show where it comes out of the house. We probably have C C T D of the main or can get it showing where the stub location is, so we can kind of connect the dots to do the best we can. Whenever we do these plans, it is, it is something that we like to do to update to the best of available information where the sewer services are. So, when we come forward and do additional work at a later date, that's at least a depiction for everybody's awareness, so. I'm sure, like, as was noted, I'm sure we can reach a conclusion on that item, but I did want to share that suggested approach with the board.
We concur.
All right, thank you. Further questions from the board? I had a quick one for staff. I guess with respect to the underground utility waiver, at least as I see it as written in the staff report, it's not an either or, like, we're either granting the waiver or we're not. Is that the language that staff feels comfortable with, just based on the testimony that was provided?
Correct. If you grant the waiver and then they do decide to go underground, that would be okay. Unfortunately, if they say they're going to go overhead and then they have, they're going to go underground and then they're going to go overhead, then they'd have to come back to the board.
Got you. Okay. You understood that?
No.
Okay.
I agree with that summar.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions from the board this time? Okay, seeing none. I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public here to speak on this application tonight, either with opposition or concern? Seeing none. Any member of the public wish to speak in favor of this application? All right, in that case, one last chance for the board. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony, and I would tend to agree with the applicant. Just brevity was much greater, obviously, comparatively to some earlier discussions tonight, but I don't really have any further thoughts or, but obviously, welcome input from the board.
Should we bring the clearing?
Mr. Hudson, please.
It does create a fairly small lot. You know, we're seeing this type of development lately where it's infill. This created lot, I think, is smaller than some of the ones we've seen in the past, but it's noted in the staff report that does meet the dimensional requirements, so I don't know if there's anything more to say about that. City does have a need for housing, and this creates some, so I think in that sense, it's a good thing. We heard no public testimony in opposition to the creation of a smaller house lot, and for that reason, I'm fine to support it.
Thank you, Dan. Anything else from the board? Is anyone willing to make a motion? Property, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero seven one, property located at six Berkshire Street.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion in regards to New Business Subdivision Plans, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero seven one, to make a motion to approve the case with ten, I'm sorry, eight conditions. Yeah, eight conditions, three waivers. Waiver one, the request for waiver one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, which requires physical features on adjacent parcels within a thousand feet, is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Waiver two, the request for waiver one ninety-two twenty-one C, which requires underground utilities for new subdivision plans, is granted. Finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And finally, waiver three, the request for waiver one ninety-two one, two-one-two A one, which requires that a sidewalk be located on at least one side of the street, is granted. Finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Applicant has agreed to make a contribution in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars in lieu of sidewalk construction pursuant to one ninety dash two-one-two D two. And then four through eight as written.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harper. There's a motion on the table for approval. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion passes. Case approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Next item on the agenda, there's two that I'd like to hear at the same time if you're considering a motion. First is under New Business Subdivision Plan, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight nine, property located at one oh three Temple Street. And the joining case would be New Business Site Plan, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero nine zero, property located at the same address, one oh three Temple Street. Has any member of the board had an application to review those cases and is willing to make a motion regarding board jurisdiction over those two cases? Mr. Leclerc?
Yeah, just make a motion to accept jurisdiction of eight twenty-four dash zero zero eight nine and eight twenty-four dash zero zero nine zero.
Motion by Mr. Leclerc, is there a second? Second by Ms. Harper, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion passes. Mr. Zajak, welcome back. Please, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, three Congress Street here in Nashua, representing the applicant. With me here tonight is Michael LaFavor from Property Possible, the applicant and the developer, as well as Adam Wagner from Market Square Architects. Here tonight, seeking approval for two applications related to the proposed one oh three Temple Street redevelopment project approved by the board last July. The first application is a site plan extension and amended approval to redevelop the property into a three, five, and six-story multifamily residential buildings totaling three hundred and sixty-seven units along with associated site improvements. We also have a subdivision application, which is new, associated with that proposed redevelopment that's being proposed for financing purposes such that there is one building on each lot. So, Mr. Chair, I've just got a very brief presentation, and then afterwards, we'd be happy to answer any questions. So, as shown on the screen, one oh three Temple Street, map thirty-seven, lot six, five point eight acres located in the G I and T O D overlay zone. Direct to butters, you can see Temple Street to our north along with retail uses and the railroad. West is Spruce Street and residential uses. East, Scripture Street, Worcester Street and residential uses. South of the site is Howard Street, Saint Mary's Bank, Wendy's, a city fire station, along with other city-owned land. As you can see from the aerial photo, the site is currently developed, large, former industrial building complex totaling about a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet, one- and three-story buildings. Historically, the site was the location of the J F McElwain Shoe Manufacturing Company dating back to the nineteen twenties. As always, Scott does a great job in summarizing the history of the. As always, Scott does a great job in summarizing the history of the site, including a video of the shoe factory from the nineteen twenties. Current uses on the site, contractors' yard, kitchen store, tire repair, sales, business, church, shelter and bingo hall. We've got over two thousand feet of frontage and a total of eight different curb cuts currently on the adjacent roads. Overall, the site is generally flat. Existing site is serviced by sewer, water, gas and overhead electrical and telecommunications utilities. Next slide, please, Linda. So as you'll see on your screen is the updated site plan. Again, this is something the board approved about a year ago. All the buildings on site will be demolished to make way for the three new multifamily buildings, again totaling three hundred and sixty-seven. That's a five-unit increase from what was proposed last summer. You can see a similar layout of the new buildings and parkings. One of the goals of the TOD overlay is to create urban streetscapes by placing the aesthetically pleasing buildings up along the street frontage with surface parking provided internally to the rear of the site. We also focus on providing a landscape buffer as best we could between the parking lot and Scripture Street to the east. If you've been down Scripture Street, a very, very narrow, narrow alleyway between the backside of the building and those units, specifically the existing three-story industrial building. Quickly on the buildings, building A located at the corner of Temple and Spruce Streets, the L-shaped building, six stories totaling two hundred and five units. Again, five extra units are being proposed there from what was approved last summer. Eighty-nine total parking spaces on the garage level. Building B located along Spruce Street, similar six-story building totaling ninety units, thirty-four underground parking spaces. Lastly, building C located along Howard and Worcester Streets, five-story building totaling a hundred and ninety units. Each of these buildings will include a ground floor level, which will include parking along with some of the amenities and common areas for the project, and then there'll be residential stories above, above that. In terms of the total units, as I mentioned, five more units, but it's also important, the unit types of the, the matrix of the bedroom breakdown has also been shifted significantly. When we came before this board last summer, we were considering about two-thirds of the units would be two-bedroom units and about one-third would be one-bedroom. The current plan is to, to include seventy-one studio units, two-hundred-and-nine one-bedroom units and eighty-seven two-bedroom units, so predominantly studio and, and one-bedrooms, which of course help us out with parking, which I'll talk about in a second. For the record, the project will obviously comply with the inclusionary housing ordinance, which requires minimum of twenty percent of the units to meet the affordability requirements. In terms of building design, that's probably the biggest change, which is why Adam's here tonight. So as I mentioned, five and six-story buildings, podium parking with residential above. I'll turn things over to Adam in a second. He's got some comparison slides to kind of show you the difference between what was approved last summer and what we're currently seeking to build. With regards to parking, four hundred and fifty-four spaces, that's four hun, one hundred and fifty-four garage level, two hundred and ninety-six surface spaces. That's about one point two-four spaces per unit provided. As you know, the TOD allows a minimum of one space per unit. But due to the change in the unit matrix, another way to look at parking is one space per bedroom. And we're right there. We've got four hundred and fifty-four spaces provided for four hundred and fifty bedrooms. So I think because the unit mix is so predominantly studio and one-bedrooms, adequate parking is certainly going to be provided on-site. We've also included some smaller loading spaces at each building to address the inevitable U-Haul box trucks and Amazon delivery vans that'll be coming in and out of these, the site. We have not changed anything with regards to access. We've got one new curb cut on Temple Street to the north, one on Spruce Street to the west, and two onto Howard Street to the south. We're also showing an additional driveway connection to Worcester Street and Scripture to the east to be gated and used for emergency access purposes. That is something that was requested by the fire department, and you've seen the plans, additional site improvements, curbing, sidewalks, signage, landscaping, sight lighting, utility improvements, as well as stormwater management. I won't go through my full presentation on stormwater. I talked about it a lot last summer in terms of the ability of this site, which is fully developed, really drains into the city's combined sewer system in this area. So I can imagine, certainly doesn't help that scenario in large storm events in terms of potential backing up and flooding of these local streets. We are fully disconnecting our site from the combined sewer system and instead focusing on onsite recharge and infiltration. Similar, similar approach regarding stormwater, similar results to what we submitted last summer. I do want to mention that based on the changes and slightly smaller footprints of these buildings, we actually do have a slight decrease in impervious area compared to the existing site. When we were here last summer, we were basically even with what's out there today. So it should be a very, very significant improvement with regards to stormwater. Before I turn things over to Adam, one of the exciting elements of this project is its location between the Riverwalk to the north and the Heritage Rail Trail to the east. And we talked about this last summer as well, to provide direct connect, pedestrian connections for future residents from this site to the downtown area, which is one of the key points in the master plan, is to get people, you know, walking in the downtown area. There's a project that's on the current tenure DOT plan called the Spruce Street Connector, which really connects those two elements along our site. Our project contemplates essentially building all or most of that improvement. It was something that we discussed early on with city staff, planning and engineering. We agreed to it essentially in lieu of the standard traffic contribution, and you can see that design is fully incorporated into these plans. So that will include a full ten-foot wide multi-use path along our frontage on Spruce Street, as well as connectivity on each side. Like I said, the Riverwalk to the north and the Heritage Rail Trail to the south, it will involve moving curb line, moving drainage, but it's going to be an incredible amenity, not only to the residents of this project, but the public in general. As I mentioned, the new application for a subdivision, that's new this summer, essentially subdividing this one lot into three lots, purpose having one building per lot for financing. Very straightforward application. All the lots are conforming to the applicable dimensional requirements. And as you see in the conditions, there's an agreement understanding to provide cross-access and utility easements between these lots, should any of them be sold. Before I get into the waivers and staff reports, Adam, maybe I'll have you come up and talk through some of the slides on some of the architectural changes.
Do you know what page?
What's that?
Do you know what page?
Just the first, we started at the first one, I think.
It's just all one side. Was it the end?
If we can get to the side-by-side with the approved elevation and the new elevation. So while you're finding that, I'll introduce myself. My name's Adam Wagner. I'm a partner with Market Square Architects. We were not part of the original conceptual approval. We had been brought in to create the construction drawings for this project, and so what I'm going to talk about today is somewhat twofold. Number one is turning those concept designs into actual construction drawings, something that can be built, that's been coordinated with structural, with MVP engineering and whatnot. And with that, there are always design changes that take place. We also saw a pretty significant opportunity to break down the scale of this building, create something that was a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. So, actually, can we just scroll up a little bit, I think, or down? The image is right below. Those two.
You still?
Just, it's the, it's the page that's showing on the top there. Those two. Can you zoom in on? And scroll down a little bit? All right, we're getting there. All right. Perfect. So the image on the top is the conceptual design that was approved a year ago, and the image on the bottom is where we are right now. So what I'd like to do is kind of break this down into three parts. I'm going to talk about the roof line, then I'm going to talk about the body of the building, and then I'm going to talk about the base of the building. So in looking at the top of the building, the roof line, really that concept design didn't include any integration for mechanical units, so it hadn't been worked through. As you can see, there's very little articulation. The soffit line is straight across the, the length of the building. So there's, there's, there's no undulation there. The overhangs on the perimeter are very small. And just in general, there's very, very limitation, very limited variety on height. And I should add to this as I go. Everything I'm going to talk about is applicable to all three buildings, but for this comparison purposes, we're just going to talk about this one. So the new design that you see below that, we've located a mechanical roof well. We have seventeen compressor units that are going to go up on that roof that support the common areas of the building. Scott, I know you asked earlier about mechanical systems. For this building, our basis of design is an all-electric system. We have magic packs with an integral ERV within the units, so those condensers would just support common area. The prior design made no accommodations to put any rooftop equipment on there, so we wanted a space that we could put it and yet still screen it from viewing as best we could. We integrated far more definition on the end pieces where the roof terminates. And then you see the, the overhangs on the roof are significantly greater. We've added brackets there, just items that embellish the design, make it a little bit more human, make it real. And so those are, are in place. As we go to the body of the building, the original design, very flat, two materials, there are actually only two different unit, window sizes in that design. So they were small windows and it was just punch after punch after punch. There was very little definition in terms of vertical or horizontal breakup. And so the, the new proposed design has significantly more articulation in the facade. The overall massing of the building, the footprint, that stayed largely the same. But we now have six different window types. We have five different building materials, again, all in an effort to break up the scale. And so the building won't appear quite as large as it does. Lastly, I want to talk about the base of the building. So the original design had a, basically a solid masonry wall up twelve feet. That would be the pedestrian experience walking past the building. So we didn't see that as a pedestrian-friendly solution. There were very few openings into the garage. So we have a cultured stone base. As you see, there's a lot more articulation in terms of the height of that stone, and there are far more openings within that, so that as you're walking down the street, you're not just walking next to a twelve-foot solid masonry wall. All of these are in an effort to improve the overall aesthetic of the building, and hopefully you like them.
Okay. So just want to talk about the waivers real quick. Similar approach to, to the last case. We did submit waiver request letters, both for the subdivision and site plan applications related to the existing conditions. I know you folks have seen those many times. The justification for those requests are described in detail in those letters dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I won't go through those, but I ask that those be incorporated into the record. So in summary, we, we certainly feel like this project, as amended, and the new subdivision application is complete and meets the spirit and intents of the subdivision and site plan regulations. I did want to just briefly talk about some of the pieces of the staff report. I know this came together kind of at, at the last minute, which I truly appreciate again, Dan and Scott, Linda and Sam and staff. Just a couple of things that I, I noticed in there that I just wanted to note for the board's consideration, should you want to act on this case tonight. The first is in the subdivision report, and just precedent condition number five speaks to all utility and infrastructure will be required to be in place for all three lots before any ownership is transferred. I didn't know if there was consideration to either reference the redevelopment plan. Obviously, these two applications tie together, but maybe consideration to make those a subsequent condition instead of a precedent condition?
Yeah.
I think that might make more sense, and maybe just to add the word in front of utility and infrastructure, just add the word site, so there's no confusion that maybe that might include buildings as well. So I would respectfully request that that would be considered. And then on the site plan, there was, just call the board's attention, I'm sure you're aware, there's pieces in there about approval for dimensional modifications. Again, the TOD allows this board to make those modifications. You're familiar with other overlay zones that allow you to do that. I love how this is spelled out in this report for you. I was just going to flag perhaps subsequent condition number one. So this is something that both the applicant and I have talked with staff. There's a Milliard Gate that exists over on the Temple Street side where Nashua Tire Warehouse is. It talks about maintaining the gate in its current location, and that's going to be really difficult because that's right on the front of one of our buildings. So certainly, we would agree to working with staff on the feasibility of finding another location on-site, perhaps to incorporate that either into the building or the project. I know there's another condition about providing a historical plaque. Certainly, we're in agreement with that, maybe over by the playground area, but I, I think that would be really difficult.
There's no green space in the front, or?
Not a lot, not a lot there. So I guess I would just ask to work with staff on the feasibility of either maintaining or relocating the historic Milliard Gate to kind of keep it, keep it on-site. But it may be tough to keep right there in its current location if you look at where the building is and where the, you know, those buildings are right up on, on top of the street. So anyway, those were the two pieces that I would respectfully request the board to, to consider with staff. Other than that, that completes my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from the board? Just got it, Ms. Harper?
Just a quick question on the, the drawing, just because I'm kind of blind, but it kind of looked like there was a ladder access on the end of the building to the roof. Is that, now that is? I don't know. It looks almost like a ladder to me. It could be stone. Is there access from within the building to service HVAC, or is that an external ladder to access it? I guess that's my question.
You're talking about the far right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the left. I think what it is is where that section is.
Can you step up? Just step up.
Can you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry, stop being recorded. So that's, that's definitely not a ladder. I think what it is-
But you can see that, like, through it, kind of, I don't know.
Yeah, so we have those bump outs that have the board and batten, and I think that is a bump out that's sitting on that facade going away from you, and that's why you're seeing it as a wireframe. And that's why you're seeing it as a wireframe.
Okay.
But that's not a ladder.
Excellent. I'd be the tallest one I've ever seen to access the roof.
No roof deck.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
That's the, oh, Mr. Hudson, please.
Sorry, last second question. Can you just describe what the construction of the building would be? Is this going to be wood frame construction? And along those lines, do we have any Nashville Fire Department comments? Do we?
Yes.
Yes to the wood frame?
Yes to the wood frame. So the six-story building, it's a five-over-one podium. So first floor would be type one construction and then type three construction, fire-treated wood load-bearing structure above that.
Okay, and for staff, do we have fire comments?
Yes.
The precedent conditions don't reference a date.
Fire comments are, relate back to the original comments on May 15, 2023.
Okay.
And I don't think much has changed, Tom, from fire.
Yeah, it would just be the podium construction and whatever issues they have with that. I mean, that is something that we're seeing in the city, so it's certainly not new. So I don't know what the specifics are. I know we dealt with that on the High and School Street project. It may have certain requirements, but.
Scott, please.
Just one question for staff on the subdivision waivers. In one place it says section, the waivers being requested are 19279 EE, but in the recommended actions, it's 190-281D?
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the subdivision would be the 281?
This 281D is the right waiver we're requesting.
Yeah, EE is for site plan.
Got it. Okay, so it's the 281.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions from staff or from the board, excuse me? Open it up to the public. Is any member of the public here to speak in opposition or with concern for this application? Seeing none, is there any member of the public wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, bring it back to the board for one more chance. I will ask, actually, a follow-up question of staff. Is this to be read in a similar manner as the first case we heard this evening, where we are doing this in a stepwise procedure? And is there a reason why the other application, why it's were kind of bookended this way tonight? I'm trying to figure out if this is going to be the procedure moving forward and-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll tidy it up, we'll cinch it up as much as we possibly can. Lessons learned from court cases, we'll say.
Understood, okay. We're actually closed.
Oh, you both are okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, unless, did you want, did you need to address something, Tom, that Dan had brought up, or?
No, just the waiver reference.
Oh.
You can talk to them, and they can tell us.
I'll give the same as last one. Is the subdivision for existing conditions?
Yeah, you know, just because they're not picking it up on mic, I, do we need a motion to reopen?
I'm moved to reopen the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Leclair, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry for the confusion there, Tom.
No, it's okay. Sorry about that, I tried to, we were just talking about that waiver section. And I believe it's 282B9 is the existing conditions for subdivision. That's what we had asked for the last one, but I'll certainly defer to staff.
They did clarify that, yeah, yeah.
Staff on that?
EE is the site plan, and the other ones-
Just the housekeeping on-
282B9?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll reclose the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Any discussion or a?
No, just for staff, you don't have any issue with, I guess it's precedent number six being moved to subsequent?
No, that should be subsequent.
Yeah, subsequent, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
All right. Any further discussion from the board on this one? Well, in that case, I would ask if any member of the board would be willing to make a motion with respect to new business subdivision plan, case 824-0089? Mr. Leclair, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that case. I'll start with the waivers, and I make a motion to approve the waiver. And it's going to read as 282-B9. This is for subdivision plan requirements, to waive the requirement to show existing conditions within a thousand feet of the property boundaries. And that the board is utilizing the criteria from RSA 674-36 to N, RSA 674-44-3E, and section 190-148D, understanding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would be not, would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of regulations. And specific circumstances or conditions of the land indicate the waiver properly will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair with respect to granting the waiver. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Harper? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed, none? Motion passes. Scott, you're welcome to continue if you wish.
Yeah, second motion regarding this application is that's for approval of the three-lot subdivision at 103 Temple Street, making a determination that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO 190-138G, and that there would be the precedent stipulations as indicated in the staff report, with the exception that number six be moved to the second subsequent stipulation, maintaining the first subsequent stipulation as indicated in the staff report. And that that second subsequent stipulation be read as all utility and site infrastructure will be required to be in place for all three lots before any ownership is transferred.
Thank you, Scott. There is a motion by Mr. Leclair regarding granting subdivision approval. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion?
Just noting that the, in precedent condition two, that the date of fire comments is May 15, 2023.
Okay, and I'll amend my motion to include that, as indicated, Mr. Hudson, that the email from Nashville Fire is dated May 15, 2024, I think it is.
May 15, 2023.
Twenty-three, excuse me.
All right. So we have an amended motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, subdivision approved. And case 824-0089 is approved. Next item, would any member of the board be willing to make a motion with respect to the site plan application, case 824-0090? Mr. Leclair, please.
Yeah, so I make a first motion on this application to grant a waiver from 190-279EE, the site plan's middle requirements, waiving the requirement to show existing conditions on the adjacent parcels, considering that we're using the criteria from RSA 674-36 to N, RSA 674-44-3E, and 190-148D, understanding strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. And the specific circumstances or conditions of the land indicate the waiver will probably carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
All right, thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Leclair regarding granting of the waiver. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Harper? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Motion passes. Scott, please continue if you wish.
Yeah, so a second motion on this application granting approval for dimensional modifications as authorized in 190-261, with that dimensional modification approval language as written in the staff report.
All right, there was a motion by Mr. Leclair regarding granting approval for dimensional modifications. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I want to make one note on the approval motion for the site plan. I just need to correct that this is not actually a site plan approval. This is site plan amendment and approval extension, as this was previously approved. So I just recommend using the language "site plan approval" and "one-year approval extension."
Very good.
Okay.
We're good, okay, thank you, Sam. Scott, if you're willing, please, please continue.
Yeah, so I'll make a third motion on this application regarding the conditional site plan approval and site plan amendment approval and one-year extension. And that we determined that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO 190-146D. And as part of that, we include the precedent and subsequent conditions as written in the staff report.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hudson?
One suggested amendment, that would be subsequent condition number one, where it references the gate and brick post to read supporting brick posts on the project site as part of the landscaping. So just that replacement in that section of the language.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and amend my motion to modify subsequent condition number one to read, work with staff to maintain the historic mill yard gate and supporting brick posts on the site as part of the landscaping to add additional character to the project. And continue with the Green State Historical Marker should also be added to the site to tell the story of the pioneering manufacturing facility.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and case 824-0090 is approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, new business site plan, case 824-0073, property located at 503 Main Dunstable Road. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion for the board to accept jurisdiction? Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take jurisdiction.
All right, a motion by Ms. Harper to accept jurisdiction. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Motion passes, board has jurisdiction. Mr. Zajak, proceed whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Chair, for the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. I'll try to be as brief as we can with this application. I'm running out of gas, and I'm sure you folks are as well. Here tonight representing the applicant, there's a couple of members of the Crossway Church team here with us tonight. I appreciate them coming out. We're here seeking site plan approval for a proposed one-story, roughly thirty-five, a hundred-square-foot building addition, along with parking expansion and associated site improvements. So just have a very brief presentation, and then would be happy to answer any questions from the board. As shown on the screen, existing site, 503 Main Dunstable Road, map C, lot 184. It's about a twelve-acre lot located in the R40 zoning district. You can see from the aerial photo, we've got kind of plan, plan right is north. The city-owned wooded land. And then really to our, all of the sides of the property, east, west, south, we've got single-family residences off Pepperell Circle, off Main Dunstable Road, really on all three sides. As you can see, existing site is currently developed. The original church project was permitted in 2006 and subsequently constructed. That project consisted of a one-story church building totaling a little over ten thousand square feet and about three hundred seats. The original house that sat on the lot along Main Dunstable is still there, and it's currently used for offices. That's kind of in the lower left-hand corner of the plan. There's also a detached garage in that area that's being used for storage. The primary site driveway is located off of Main Dunstable Road. There's also a secondary gated access, again, that was associated with that original home, located also along Main Dunstable Road, kind of plan, plan lower left. Existing parking is about one hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces on site, including a large gravel parking area in the rear of the church. Overall, the site is generally flat. You can see from the aerial photo, the project is, the site's really known for the large pond in the middle of the site, and also has a number of wetlands located to the rear of the site. Existing site is serviced by public sewer, water, gas, drainage, and overhead electrical and telecommunications utilities, overhead and underground, I should say. In terms of the church, they've got two locations here on Main Dunstable Road. They also have a location downtown as well. I had Tim Lafferty from Crossway really give me a very detailed description of their operations and community services. And I think rather than going in those in detail, really, the point of that was to really give the board the gist of the widespread community services that are offered by this group, and also talk about really the growing demand in terms of their services and really the need to expand, both in terms of their parishioners and the services they provide. I think what I'll do is if there are specific questions from the board, just have Tim get up and answer some of those questions in the interest of time. So as I mentioned, really, there's a current demand here for an expansion. They're running three full Sunday services at this location right now. The parking lot's full, and they could use some more room. So this is really where the one-story addition comes from. It'll help add two hundred and forty-seven seats for a total of five hundred and forty-seven from the three hundred that are existing. There's also a small meeting room as part of that addition for youth and group activities. We did submit building elevations as part of this project. Really, the goal there is to match the existing, is prefinished cement siding, which has the appearance of wood as well as a shingled roof. The peaked roof at the chapel is about twenty-nine feet high. The meeting room's about eighteen and a half feet high, to give you an understanding, kind of the sizing and massing. Of course, we've got an associated parking expansion with the project. And if you don't mind going to the next page, which is really formalizing the gravel parking lot in the rear of the site, as well as adding spaces in the front and rear to get from one fifty-seven to a total of two twenty-five on site. We're also improving existing accessible parking areas in front of the building. As part of this project, there are minor wetland buffer impacts, mostly in the rear of the site and in areas that were already previously disturbed. No change to existing access along Main Dunstable Road. Additional site improvements include curbing sidewalks, landscaping, site lighting, utility services, and stormwater management. So, Mr. Chair, as outlined in the staff report, this application is really truncated based on what you typically see. The staff report references the provisions of RSA 674-76, which is a relatively new state statute that deals with religious uses. I do know that staff reviewed that and how it applies. I do know that staff reviewed that and how it applies, not only to this project but other projects, and felt that our application is, is certainly consistent with that approach. So in summary, this project is, is much needed to provide additional capacity for the church and the community that they serve. Crossway has been a great and responsive neighbor since opening the facility in 2006. We are in receipt of the letter that was submitted from one of the abutters off of Pfeffer Circle. They actually have a very good relationship with this abutter, there's been some tree clearing and access rights granted on that property over the years through the church, and they actually did recently meet with, with that property owner to discuss the project as well. And so the, the, our testimony tonight is the church will continue to do their best to address any questions or comments from the abutting property owners, specifically in the area where our parking expansion is closest to the rear of those lots. Of course, there were no formal landscaping or lighting plans that are required, there are some, there are some provisions in their budget for the project for landscaping and lighting, and again, the commitment is to continue to work with those abutters to address their concerns about screening and, and light trespass and, and things of that nature, so. The conditions outlined in the staff report are, are acceptable and if successful tonight, the project is on target to begin later this summer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I guess I, I was just wondering, like, what's the intent of the review here tonight?
That's a fair question. I, I think that question's probably most appropriately directed to the sponsoring representative who brought this bill forward to the legislature. We, we still have to grant site plan approvals. Basically, the bill limits our ability and what we can review, but it does not waive the site plan approval process at the municipal level. It, it, as Tom said, it truncates our review authority.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
To that point, Mr. Chair, I don't know if the motion should be amended maybe, or what's recommended motion should be amended to reference the fact that requirements is outlined in the site plan, NRO 190146D, as, as it relates to the various aspects that are under our jurisdictional ability, including height of structures, yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, building coverage requirements, per RSA 674-76 maybe? Would that be appropriate amendment?
I think that's a fair amendment, yes.
Yeah, I mean, in, I don't know, deliberations like that.
That was a lot.
I don't have any questions for that.
That was a lot of additional words.
Well, just because of the entire exercise we've gone through tonight with other motions, is, is that something that should have baked in here? Should there just be a blanket reference to RSA 674-76? That might be the cleanest way to do it, because I don't necessarily want to say what we had jurisdiction review versus what we didn't have jurisdiction, because we, we could be here for another three hours, I, I think. So would it make the most amount of sense if a board member is willing to make a motion to approve that he specifically cite the RSA within the conditions of approval, add condition five or wherever you want to put it in, but in addition to, I guess, our jurisdiction as a board comes from NRO 190-146, so I think that should still be in there.
Yeah, you could say the requirements as in, in 190146, but limited by RSA 676, 67476.
Okay. Everybody buy that?
Yeah, that kind of makes sense to me. It's easier to start from the top and add the limit versus try to build up from the bottom.
Yep.
All right, now that we've got our paperwork in order, were, were there any other questions for the board, for either Tom or for the, the applicant directly?
No.
No? All right. Very quickly, anyone in the audience here to speak in opposition or concerned? No? No one here to speak in favor either? All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Any, any remaining discussion items or further questions for staff on this one?
No, I, I, I think, you know, it makes sense, maybe, yeah, just that first part of it, if we said something to the order of plan meets requirements outlined in NRO 190-146D as limited by RSA 67476. You know, then, then I think I'm in kind of the right camp. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's the cleanest way, just again, given, given the limited, I, I think, review authority of the city in this instance, as long as it's stipulated as far as the approval, I think that's, that's fine, so. If, if someone was willing to make that motion. So I, I guess if there's no further discussion, would a member of the board be willing to make a motion regarding new business site plan, case 824-0073? Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve and make the determination that the, this application's plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO 190-146D as limited by our jurisdiction within RSA 67476, with the stipulation, the four stipulations as indicated in the staff report.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes.
Great, thanks.
Next item on the agenda, review of tentative agenda to determine developments of regional impact. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the latest review meeting projects and is willing to make a motion on projects of potential regional impact? Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I've reviewed minutes from the technical review meeting of June 10th with respect to the items on the agenda, I do not find any that are of potential regional impact.
All right, motion by Mr. Leclair, no projects of regional impact. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Any, any discussion items this evening besides the temperature of the room? Our new approval procedure? Sam, I appreciate that. I know I was somewhat forewarned, but I, I think there's got to be a less clunky way.
Yeah.
You can't spend half the meeting just, just reading motions.
I agree.
Not going to work in perpetuity, so.
Granted, you won't have applications as motion-heavy as the Mohawk Tannery Board.
No, I think conceptually, if there was a way to combine one or two of the motions.
The, the important thing to capture is you have to state findings relative to granting waivers.
Yep.
And those are the criteria you have to found being met, so that, that language has to stay in some form, it might be able to be truncated a little bit, but.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder if it could be in the form of, here's the waivers that we, granting or not granting or whatever, and then say something along the lines of pursuant to the criteria as indicated in the staff report.
Yep.
You know, like not have to spell out all the numbers.
Okay.
Something like that, and then you could, you could still have them in there, but maybe the first line just says, you know, pursuant to the following criteria, and just a list of those criteria versus a sentence, and then you could just reference the report, you know? The more, the more we could just go direct to the report reference instead of repeating. It might, it might speed it up, I don't think it's too bad.
Yeah, no, I think, I think some of it, it was, it was the first time going through it, so we, we do appreciate your, your guidance, it, it was just in, obviously there were some extenuating circumstances with, with the first application.
Yes.
So all, all duly noted for the record, but again, it, it was almost 100 degrees outside and I think it's almost 100 degrees in here, so I, 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 I think what, if anyone's willing to make a motion to adjourn, Ms. Harper?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second? All those in favor? Aye. All right, we are adjourned at 10 o'clock on the dot.